It was in the power. If we get them done in time, we put them in.
Okay, I call to enter our special city council workshop meeting of July 6th. Second item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on three items, growth-related traffic issues, Oklahoma Public Safety Protection District, and EMS billing. Leroy?
Eric Harlow is going to make this presentation.
All right, Eric. Come on, Chief. Do it. Figured out the clicker. Leroy gave me some tips on it. Start.
As you guys know, we'll start off with the traffic-related issues. And we made this, basically the same presentation to both our state and federal congressional and senate delegation a couple of months ago, kind of on the heels of several bad accidents here in our immediate area. The subsequent growth we've got going on has really contributed to a lot of this. The first area we're going to talk about is the South Division corridor. Sure everybody in TV land can hear me, I guess. You guys probably travel this every day. You know how bad the traffic is. Don, I know you've got firsthand knowledge just from towing cars down there. We have a ton of vehicle crashes, basically in the stretch from about Airport Road down past Prairie Grove. And a lot of it's due to inattentive driving, no left-hand turn lanes for all the businesses and the housing additions and the apartment complexes down there. And it's only continued to get worse and will get worse with the soon-to-be open Meridian Tech Center campus. And then also, as you can see in red, the new phase of Mission Hills that was recently approved. I believe 300 roughly total houses, Leroy, is that right?
Three hundred and seven.
Three hundred and seven? Okay. Any of you guys that have tried to pull out of Mission Hills or the Savannah House Pleasant Hills Apartments across the street, you know how hard it is to get out on a division right there. There's a little bit of a sight distance issue with the hill coming out of there, being able to see the southbound traffic. And then the second picture there, you can see the Meridian Campus under construction. You guys can just imagine what kind of traffic load that's going to put both left and right-hand turns into that campus locations. So, we did discuss this with our Division Four engineer with ODOT, kind of put it on his radar. Some of this he knew about, some of it he didn't know about. But definitely brought it to his attention. Sorry. Some of the potential fixes are signal lights, which have been talked about for several years down there. Tenny, if you remember, we lowered the speed limit nine years ago, maybe? Dropped it from 55 to 45 down there. It hasn't really helped. Still one of our hotspots for crashes in town. Going back on the records for 2020, we only found three. Seems like there were several more than that. Chris, you were probably out there for 90% of them too. So, they're not always terrible, but any crash isn't good. Some of the other solutions are to lower that hill and correct the sight distance issues, but you're talking quite a bit of money there to come in and lower that hill, the dirt removal and the repaving and stuff. And then a center lane, center turn lane throughout that whole corridor would help a lot. But then again, you're talking about a lot of dirt work, widen the roadway, acquiring right-of-way, so on and so forth. And with that being a state highway, a lot of that would fall on ODOT for financial responsibility. And currently, it's not really on their radar for their eight-year construction plan. Working with both ODOT and our House of Representatives and senate delegation, we could probably try to get that pushed, push to get on their radar sometime. But as anything with state roads, you know, it doesn't work fast, so.
So, just, because I don't think, you know this, and a lot of people don't know this, but through the county and Ideal Homes, we've kind of come up with an agreement in principle to pave Davis to industrial.
Yeah, I'd heard rumor that.
That's going to be a big deal.
That'll be huge. Maybe if you can convince people to go to industrial and come back and catch the light, that'll help. But unfortunately, drivers tend to take the shortest route.
Yeah.
Old habits are hard to break, especially for those that already live in the current phase. So, that will definitely be a helping factor, though.
So, Chief, just before you leave that, and all of these presentations that you've got involve ODOT.
They really do, yes.
And so if it isn't on their radar, the action that this group can take is?
It is, you know, a resolution supporting any kind of improvements definitely helps and officially files a complaint, if you will, or files a letter of support from this group to the state. But like I said, we just brought a lot of this to their division engineers' attention less than two months ago. So, it could be on their radar.
One of the other things that always amazes me when I sit on some ACOG boards, and it's the number of accidents is a significantly driving force.
It is.
On all of these, which is unfortunate that you've got to have things go wrong before they're corrected. But I guess that's just their reality. And that's their metric for where the hotspots are.
Yeah, it really is an unfortunate reality with, it seems like anything dealing with a road change, a lot of times it takes a death or serious injury or multiple to get their attention enough to make a change. One of the other areas we'll talk about here in the next few slides, ODOT actually took immediate action and has future plans that immediately went on their radar after fatality accidents, like you said. So, this obviously is going to be a big-ticket item, but unfortunately, with the growth down there, we're probably going to continue to see increasing number of crashes.
And Chief Swager, if you have anything on the traffic and crash stuff, we'll read it.
Yeah, I don't have a lot. It's just, it's, you know, I can put my motorcycle guy out there and the people, you can lower the speed limit while you want, they'll set out there all day logging our tickets. They don't drive it. And then the people trying to get out of Mission Hills can't, and we have a collision. It just repeats itself.
The next one is probably, in Chief and I's discussions, this probably is the number-one area for crashes here in town, and that's the Pine and Noble intersection. One of the same problems we have on the south end of Division, same problem here, no dedicated left-turn lanes, and you've got a hill west of the intersection that causes a sight distance issue as you're going eastbound. So, potential solutions, once again, add left-turn lanes, which would cause you to widen the intersection. One potential solution that the ODOT engineer threw out there, he said he would have to run the numbers to see if it was even feasible, but it was to reduce the four-lane down to two-lane, which would give them the space to add a center turn lane in both directions. He would have to look at the traffic counts to see if one through lane in each direction would be adequate for the amount of traffic coming through there. And of course, just like South Division, lowering that hill, which probably isn't too feasible considering the number of homes and businesses right there west of the intersection, the limited amount of right-of-way they've got to work with. That left picture is a little bit hard to tell until you've sat down in a lowered vehicle, running east on Noble. It's hard to truly see how bad of a sight distance issue there really is coming up to that light. We deal with it every day, just about running emergency calls going west. You never know what you're going to see when you pop up over that hill. Somebody's going to be stopped to turn north on Pine. And if they see you coming and then us having to go into oncoming traffic to proceed through that intersection can become a little bit of a problem. And I don't know, I know in the last handful of years, the stoplight pole's been taken out at least once.
Several times. And back to kind of the mayor's question there about the traffic correction accidents. When once ODOT looks at these numbers that we're giving them, they then take it back and they'll only pull out your turning accidents. Their ratio is turning traffic only too, so it'll even drop it even more. You may have lane change numbers in there in an accident, but they'll drop it to only turning traffic only too. So, probably another reason that we haven't seen as much on their radar as well.
But just bringing their engineer in a few months ago and having that meeting with him, he was very attentive and it opened his eyes to a lot of the issues that he doesn't always hear about because they're in town and not out on the rural highways, so. The next one is Academy and Noble, another hotspot. Six collisions in 20, one of those being fatal last summer. Most of our crashes out there, like Tenny said, they're due to turning. There's a lot of cross-traffic there with Logan County Asphalt, Form Technologies, our public works shop, the, I say newly opened, I guess it's been there a few years ago, but the West Side Travel Stop, and then of course, the hospital and all the housing and job corps south of there. So, there's quite a bit of turning traffic at that intersection. They do have a little bit of more room to work with right-of-way wise out there. Unfortunately, there's some drop-offs to the, off to the edge of the roadway, which may require some costly dirt work. But once again, signal lights and left-hand turn lanes would greatly help out with some of the issues out there. This is one that ODOT is looking at, along with the next one we'll cover.
Before you leave that.
Yeah.
What about the potential impact of the future new sports complex?
Once again, that would, just like Meridian.
Right there.
And Mission Hills will contribute to increases on South Division. Our sports complex would increase, not only on Academy, but our planned entrance, which is further west of Commerce Drive, a little bit outside of this picture to the west.
And one of the nice things in visiting with the district engineer, we could make him aware, and we showed him the plans for the sports complex, the plans for the industrial park. So, he's aware of some of the future projects, so when he's thinking eight years out, he knows what's on our plans to take that into consideration.
And one of the problems we'll kind of run into where the planned entrance to the sports complex is, is that is past where the 55 mile an hour zone starts. So, it may be something on this body's behalf, much like we did when we got the speed limit lowered both out there and on South Division, is try to encourage ODOT to lower the speed limit a little further west. As Tenny said and Chief said, they don't go the speed limit, but if it saves one crash from happening, that's a plus. Just street-level view of that intersection, most of you've traveled that plenty of times. Picture on the right was from the fatality crash that occurred last summer. Larger commercial vehicle, I think he was traveling pretty close to the speed limit when it happened, but unfortunately, car pulled right out in front of him and caused that accident, so. The other one, even though it's just outside of our city limits, it's close enough to home that it's a concern to us. Broadway and 33, if any of you've ever traveled Broadway, you know it's a major.
Yeah.
Cut-through route for people trying to get around town, coming out of Edmond or off Waterloo. So, there's a lot of truck traffic, a lot of passenger vehicle traffic. Fatal collisions just in the last few years. We had a double fatality back in February out there, and then another double fatality in, well, almost exactly three years ago right now, which was a couple of teenage girls from Edmond. Blew through the stop sign, pulled out in front of a pusher RV, T-bone accident, the one we had back in February, was another fellow stopped the stop sign, vehicle occupied by two individuals that lived not too far south of that intersection. So, one would think that they were familiar that that stop sign was coming up, but they drove right under the rear axles of a eastbound tanker, tractor, trailer, and vehicle caught fire, and the two individuals burned to death. ODOT has this on their radar quite a bit. The division engineer, right before we had the meeting with him a couple of months ago, had been out there and personally sat and watched the amount of traffic coming off Broadway, and he said he was truly amazed. He had no idea the number of cars coming off Broadway out there. So, that quickly got his attention. If you haven't been out there in the last couple of weeks, they just put center line rumble strips from roughly Commerce Drive all the way out to Highway 74. Two of our fatality collisions we've had just this year alone were due to crossover center line accidents. One of those was possibly alcohol-related, the other one was just an inattentive driving, left-of-center incident. But one would hope that the center line rumble strip would have possibly prevented both of those from happening. He did, the engineer did mention that they do have the beginning works of plans to add center turn lanes out there and possibly even right-hand turn lanes for eastbound traffic going south on Broadway. They do have a significant drop-off to the north side of the road, but he believed they may be able to redesign that curve and use the south side of the roadway where there's not so much of a drop-off and wouldn't require so much dirt work. He did agree that we may have to look at a traffic signal out there in the next handful of years as well. If they do so, they may come to the city requesting us to annex that intersection and take over maintenance of the traffic signal, much like we did out at I-35 and Noble a few years ago, and may have to look at it Midwest 105 and 33 here in the next few years as well. Just a view of a couple of the crashes we've had out there. This was the tanker-trailer incident I mentioned back in February. This was the two teenagers from Edmond a few years ago. You wouldn't think with the visibility of that intersection that it would be that bad. I don't know if the little hill before you get to the intersection coming up Broadway catches that many people off-guard. They did install flashing LED stop signs three weeks after we had the meeting with ODOT, so that was a pretty quick move. And then they did the rumble strips a few weeks ago. There were rumble strips on Broadway approaching the intersection for the last few years. Logan County repaved that roadway, I believe, last year and covered those up, but I believe ODOT's working to put those back in just to give a little bit more advanced warning for folks going north on Broadway. I mentioned just a minute ago the signalization at 33 105 Midwest. ODOT has plans for federal year 2026, which would be October of 2025 into September of 2026, to widen 105 from Highway 33 out past Anderson, I believe. They'll add shoulders and widen the roadway, cut down some of the hills and cut out some of the sight distance issues. As part of that project, they're going to reconfigure this intersection where Midwest 105 and 33 all meet there at the curve. They've already noticed quite a bit of truck traffic due to the Love's Truck Stop. And then with all the growth out east on 105 with the housing additions, there's quite a bit more traffic on 105 now than there used to be. They do have a signal planned for this intersection as part of the project. And once again, they may ask us to annex a little bit further out to that intersection to assume maintenance of that traffic signal. I don't know if Logan County would be willing to do it, so we'll just have to wait and see. That's still about five years out. I mean, he said the design is not finalized on that either, so things can change. We did inform him about the industrial park and some of the potential growth issues we had out there, just to have it on his mind, as Leroy said, so they can take that into account when they finalize the design of this. Next subject we'll cover is the Oklahoma Public Safety Protection District Act. This was passed this last session in the legislature, signed into law by Governor Stitt. It'll have an effective date of this November 1. What it does is allow, say municipality, to create a public safety protection district within their city limits and collect an ad valorem property tax not to exceed five mils. It's limited for fire, police, and/or emergency medical service use only. Much like a school bond, it does require a supermajority vote of 60% or greater to pass. It exempts all agriculture and industrial properties. And based on latest estimates from the assessor's office, it would generate about $247,000 a year for us if we were to pass that at a five-mil rate.
If we could discuss that for a minute. Of course, the purpose of all these PowerPoint presentations, as we go through this, is in preparation of our planning retreat coming up. And at that planning retreat, we'll be going back through these things in more of a summary style to talk about, you know, do we want to explore raising the motel tax for future maintenance of ballfields? We'll be talking about this. Do we want to pursue this? And one of the things to keep in mind is that $240,000 isn't just adding more toys and more things. If you remember, when the capital improvement sales tax was passed, immediately, a big chunk of that was spent catching up with purchasing of fire trucks and police cars. If you had a fund like this, it would shift that burden to this fund. If you spent $120,000 each year on police vehicles and then took $120,000 roughly each year to save up, so over five years, you could place a fire truck or an ambulance, you would have a more systematic process to keep our rolling stock in those two departments more current. You still have to replace them at some point. They wear out. But then that would free up money in the future when there is a sales tax for capital improvements to go more towards the community projects the community expects and take some of this burden off of that fund. Just some thought to consider when we discuss it at the retreat.
What does five mil do to the average homeowner, do we know?
Somebody looked at and said that their property tax would go up about $50 a year.
It's 55 per 100,000.
Yep. It's pretty nominal in the grand scheme.
Is it only on people in the city limits?
Correct. We cannot do anything that would create property taxes outside the city limits. So, it'd just be on property inside the city, would not include any agricultural land or industrial land.
And this was a huge win. This has been something that the fire community, the law enforcement community, OML has been battling out for several years, probably close to 10 years now, trying to get this passed within the legislature. The Farm Bureau, who you guys probably know, they swing a huge axe when it comes to the legislature. Going to five-mil limitation and exempting the ag and industrial properties was kind of the give-and-take that they were able to get OML or Farm Bureau to be okay with this. They naturally fight anything that's going to impact their policyholders and members. So, to get this passed was a huge win for a lot of parties, so. Five mils doesn't, it didn't a lot, but that's 250,000 that we don't have today if we were able to get it passed. And as Leroy mentioned, it's a good, property tax is such a stable form of revenue versus the volatility of sales tax and riding that, you know, the ebb and flow up and down of that. So, some of the critical equipment that you have to have, having a stable revenue source for that is a nice thing to look at.
I've got a comment on it. What are we getting off of the people outside of the city limits as far as the mils for fire emergencies?
We get zero for fire unless they're members of our rural fire subscription program, which doesn't generate maybe 10, 12, 10 or 12 grand a year.
That you get outside of the city?
Yeah, but we do participate in the county-wide quarter cent sales tax for fire departments. We get an equal share of that.
And that is?
Based on current, we're getting about 55,000 a year, maybe, maybe 60. It's down quite a bit compared to what it was four or five years ago when the wheel business was up.
And then for ambulances, of course, there's the EMS district and there's the three-mil property tax that covers the school district. And then, of course, we have two different districts. But the majority of that pays for operation costs, doesn't pay for equipment.
We have, none of that is set aside by what we bring in as an equipment fund.
Yeah.
The district keeps 10%. We get, their contract with us is for 90%. The Guthrie School District EMS, we get 90% of what they bring in under contract. They hold back the other 10% for their own insurance, auditing fees, so on and so forth. But they are kind enough that every so many years, as they've saved up some of that and haven't used it all, they are willing to chip in and help us purchase ambulances. You guys that were on the council, remember when we bought these two, year and a half, I guess almost two years ago now, they're chipping in 3,500 a month, I believe, towards the part of their share of those ambulances. And then we put in a little bit of surplus, unexpended funds, and then we have the USDA grant for a chunk of that as well, so. None of that is currently set back for equipment replacement. Like Leroy said, it all goes into the operations. And that's.
And that's why I think if we decide, if a council decides to pursue this, I think we earmark it specifically for equipment.
Well, but you're still going to have to do a pretty big campaign to get 60% supermajority to vote in.
We were hoping that.
I think you'll have difficulty if you're asking citizens to pay more in mils than you're asking those in the county to pay.
We don't have the ability to, that's the problem. There is no ability.
You can't ask for more from those counties.
3% is the cap.
Less than five mils from the city, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, there is no, unless Oak Cliff, Deer Creek, Woodcrest, they are fire protection district, rural fire protection districts, and they can pass a millage up to 10 mils solely for fire protection. And I believe they're all at seven right now. But we have no ability to enact an ad valorem tax on our fire district.
Your comment is well-taken and is a good comment, but it is what it is. And if a council sees that it is a wise thing to do, they have a dedicated source to replace equipment on a more systematic basis, first decision is going to be at the city council level. Then the second decision will be made by the voters, and we will just have to present our case.
Yeah.
How it could benefit the service to them by having a systematic fund to replace those. And, you know, Councilman Bothroyd's going to help us campaign, so.
There you go. I'm used to beating doors.
There you go. So, you know, it's not, it's not a given, but it will be up to the citizens to decide if this is an appropriate thing to give between $5,000, $100 more a year so that we have a more systematic revenue stream to replace some of the equipment it takes to run police and fire and EMS.
And at the end of the day, Councilman Case, the majority of our calls are still in city limits.
But your point's well-taken.
And police, of course, all theirs are, if they're helping the county out. So, I mean, it's still going to benefit the majority here within the city limits.
But we just have to put some dog and pony shows on like the, I mean, then educate people.
We will want to do an awareness campaign to inform them of the benefits of this and how it can benefit them and what it would cost them. And hopefully, we can give them enough insight, they can make an informed decision, and then, of course, it'll just be up to the voters to make the decision. But first decision will be by the city council, do they want to put it to vote?
See, and that 247,000, that's probably based on the current residents, right?
It is, and we'll have.
And we're getting ready to have another 300 here and another 300 and some.
It should go up in the future.
Yeah.
Industrial properties would add to it, but, you know, like I said, you have to have a give-and-take to get what you could get within the legislature and get it passed. So, there's always a chance it could be modified in the future if parties choose to try to do that.
But the way I see that we will, at our retreat, we will have one sheet dealing with revenue issues to talk about motel tax, this, the sanitation rates for trash service. And council, at that time, at the retreat, will have a discussion, and the council will tell us which one of these revenue sources they're supportive of us pursuing, which ones they want us to take off the table. So, we look forward to you all giving us the guidance at that planning retreat on which ones you want us to pursue and which ones you want us to hold up on.
Any more questions on that? The next and final thing that, we've been trying to get this on the workshop schedule and get it to you guys. We were going to do it about a year ago, but we, in talking to the city attorney, we had one more year left with our current billing provider that handles our EMS billing. Our contract with them ends September 30 of this year, so we're finally able to get out from under them. Currently, what I threw up there is just a random sample I pulled of a Medicare or Medicaid patient's bill. Their name and information is, of course, been redacted. But if you look down in the right-hand corner, their original bill was $2,426, or, excuse me, $2,426 and .39 cents. This was a transport here in the city. This was a transport here in the city limits to Integris Baptist down off Northwest Expressway. So these are the way we currently bill. We have a base rate. ALS stands for Advanced Life Support. The base rate is eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. We charge fifteen dollars per mile, loaded mile. The problem we've run into, and Councilman Channel brought this up when we were looking at audit results, I believe, last year, and it's the amount that we have to write off every year, and that debt stays on our books as uncollected charges. Medicare, Medicaid will not pay any of these itemized charges that you see down here. They'll pay the base rate and they'll pay their mileage, what they deem is their current mileage rate, which Congress passes. If you look down here in the right corner, we had a twenty-four hundred dollar and change bill, payment for Medicaid, five-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars.
So they write off eighteen ninety-nine?
We wrote off nineteen hundred dollars, and we have no choice. You can't balance bill Medicaid and Medicare patient unless they have secondary insurance, like something they go out and purchase. So that right there is just a random sample I pulled so you could see what we actually write off when it comes to Medicare, Medicaid. Unfortunately, we're in a locale that a large number of our demographic is Medicare/Medicaid insured. You know, we have quite a bit of retired and elderly citizens in our jurisdiction. We also have a lot of lower income in our jurisdiction, which leads to serving Medicare/Medicaid patients. And the problem we've started to run into, and it seems to increase year by year, a lot of your private insurance carriers have gone to not paying itemized charges.
So what about your uninsured? How do you collect those? You just don't?
We bill them or send them to collections.
So if you go in and you, can you change your base rate?
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're going to talk about, that we're going to propose to do. But I wanted to give you guys an example of what we're at currently.
They'll only pay so much a mile, right?
Yes.
But your base rate can be whatever?
We can, we can make our base rate ten thousand dollars if we want.
They're not going to pay it.
Medicare pays, this is their base rate. It varies from two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars to five-hundred, almost six-hundred dollars, depending on if it's a basic life support, advanced life support, and so on.
So they're only going to pay that?
They pay what their rates are. They pick the rate that they're going to pay. And the problem is, we've got the same problem starting to occur more and more with your private insurance carriers. Blue Cross Blue Shield, for instance, we had to join their network to get what we can get from them or get less being out of network, because they'll only pay what they pay. You can go after and balance bill what's left over, but, I mean, you can't squeeze blood out of a tournant. You can take people to collections all day, if they don't have it, they don't have it. And honestly, from a moral standpoint, you've got somebody that's down and hurt, possibly paralyzed or crippled for life, you can't get money. I mean, they've got thousands in medical bills, and you're just standing in line with these big, powerful hospitals trying to get your chunk of change. So, but I wanted to show you guys an example of what we routinely are having to write off, what leads to that, I believe it was four million or so, and...
So how do some of these towns do their monthly billing on this and EMS, you know, ambulances included and all that?
So IMSA has a large subscription service, and the way they do theirs, you can privately join it, or the cities that they contract with, Edmond, Oklahoma City, Piedmont, well, not Piedmont anymore.
Village, the village does it too.
The Village, Nichols Hills, Oklahoma City, and Edmond now, I think, are all that's left in their contracted area. It's a utility bill fee, and I believe it's, I think, five dollars gets added to every utility bill automatically. And that money is their subsidy fee that those cities pay IMSA every year. It adds up.
Yeah, because not everybody's using the ambulance.
Exactly. You can opt out, but you're automatically enrolled, but you have to actually physically go and opt out or fill out a form to opt out. They automatically opt you in, but you can opt out if you want. But the way that works, those cities pay that subsidy to the provider, in that case IMSA, they write off anything insurance doesn't cover. We're kind of already having to do that anyway, other than a little bit of private pay that we're getting. We do have the property tax, like Leroy mentioned, where we have the contracts with the two EMS districts, which helps us. IMSA doesn't have that, so we at least get some money there. There are cities out there that bill, and that's it, and they have to survive on that. Doesn't work very well, especially with the increasing number of uninsured or underinsured folks out there. And then Medicare/Medicaid rates have not come anywhere close to keeping up with inflation. Councilman Case, you talked about our base rate. We are proposing, as part of this whole package, to adjust our billing structure. We haven't adjusted our base rates in quite a few years. Industry norms have gone away from the itemized billing that I talked about. Medicare/Medicaid will not pay the itemized, they'll pay the base rate. Same thing with a lot of your private carriers, and that's increasing every year. The industry norm has been to go to a higher base rate and not have any itemized billing. You'd have your base rate and your mileage, you wouldn't have, and you wouldn't have, every little thing you use, you wouldn't have a charge for that.
But why? If they're only going to pay two-hundred-and-sixty to six-hundred bucks?
Because a lot of your private carriers, they'll pay your base rate.
Okay.
Unless you're in a network contract with them, like with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're in a network rate and we get, I think it's eight-hundred dollars. United, some of the others out there, they'll pay your base rate, they just won't pay your itemized cost.
I see.
So the norm, and IMSA has done this for years, and it increased their revenues. Wasso went to this a few years ago, Broken Arrow went to this a few years ago, it's helped them out quite a bit because you don't have the little one-liner incidental costs that these insurance carriers aren't paying. But what we're proposing is a thirteen-hundred dollar base rate, basic life support or advanced life support. And these numbers are kind of mocked off what several other carriers or services are charging. We looked all over the Tulsa Metro, the Oklahoma City Metro, pulled a couple of the rural areas, and thirteen is kind of a middle-of-the-road number that we came up with. Our mileage rate would stay the same at fifteen dollars, and then two other charges that we currently have, a hundred-and-seventy-five dollar an hour, or a hundred-and-seventy-five dollar charge for what we call a treatment, no transport. That's where we go out, say, a diabetic patient, their blood sugar's down, we go out, give them some medication, get their blood sugar back up, and they're fine at that point, and they don't want to go to the hospital. We're at least able to charge recoup a little bit for our time and materials that we used. And insurance companies, Medicare/Medicaid, they will pay that. And then we have a dispatch fee of ninety-five dollars that we instituted about eight or nine years ago, and talking to several services, they recommended keeping that on there because a lot of insurance companies will pay that.
When's the last time we increased our base rate?
I want to say it was eight years ago. Probably one of the last times the Citizens Rate and Fee Advisory Committee actually met.
So, because that's a, what, forty percent increase overall we're talking about now?
It is, but it isn't, because if you look at our, a sampling of our bills, our bills are a lot more than that, but it's raising our base rate and doing away with all those itemized costs, which if you took the base rate and itemized costs, that's probably close to, more close to an average.
But we're more apt to get paid by private carriers.
Exactly.
Higher base rate.
And this is, in talking to billing contractors and other agencies, this has became the majority norm for how folks are billing now. IMSA's been doing it this way for ten-plus years.
So how does thirteen hundred dollars compare to the area as far as what the base rates are?
It's about, IMSA's like fourteen, I believe, Broken Arrow, without having all my...
Does it get a job as IMSA?
I would like to think we do better.
Well, who in the hell would we charge less? Why not?
We can do whatever this...
I'm curious, why, if you're going to go for it, why are we cutting the bread and...
The professionals and the billing providers that do this every day, they, and I don't have all my figures in front of me, but they recommended basing it on a percentage above what Medicare pays. And that's kind of where we came up with the thirteen. I've got a spreadsheet on it, I just don't have it up here, but that's kind of the...
You know more about this than I do. I'm just asking why we're not...
We originally started, we started at fifteen hundred, and they're like, that's probably a little high for the market.
Yeah, it's almost double where it's at.
Yeah, IMSA is fourteen, they're in the whole metro, thirteen, and looking at what we actually collect, still should result in better collection of our fees than what we're getting now. And this, that's, by no means is that finalized, that still has to come before you guys to be approved anyway.
But we can sure make your bill fifteen.
That's fine. I don't have my mind for getting that one.
Our current contractor, the company is actually now known as Digitek. When we first started, it was Intermedics back in two thousand and seven. It's changed hands, I've lost count the number of times the company's changed hands and been bought and sold, just in my ten years here. Our service has just, as they've gotten bigger and been bought out by bigger corporations, the service has continued to go downhill, not only for our side of service, but also on the patients when they call in to take care of billing issues.
So you think we can move that and maybe get a better collection ratio?
Coming up. We've been talking about getting away from them for several years now, but, like I said, we were stuck in a multi-year contract with them that expires the end of this September. Our current fee with them is ten and a half percent of what they collect. Seven and a half percent of that is for billing, the other three percent is for their proprietary patient care report software and the laptops that they provide to do those reports on. Nice thing about that, they do take care of all the hardware issues. If they break or have service issues, we send them back in, they send us a loaner. So that's one cost we would have to assume by getting away from them. But I can tell you their software is very cantankerous, and our guys are frequently on the phone with their support folks, trying to iron out why this report's locked up, why it's hung up, why they can't finish it.
Times money in that.
It is. And the other issue, as I mentioned with customer service, the complaints from patients dealing with this company have just gone through the roof in the last few years. Can't understand who they're talking to, they're no help, they're rude, you know, the list goes on. And when we went with Intermedics back in oh-seven, there were quite a few departments in Oklahoma that were with them. That number has rapidly declined in the last few years. In searching around, talking to several departments, EMS MC, which is EMS Management and Consultants, they're based out of Lewisville, North Carolina, they've been doing nothing but EMS billing for twenty-five-plus years. Two of their Oklahoma clients of note are Broken Arrow and Coeida, both of who used to be with Intermedics or Digitek that we're with now. They switched, Coeida just switched last year, Broken Arrow has been with them about three years now. Broken Arrow has noted a twenty-five percent plus increase in their revenues in switching. Just in our dealings and talking to them, they've been very user-friendly with us, showing us how their software works, walking us through it, letting our guys double up a call and run it on their system versus the system we're using now, and the guys, beyond light years better, so much more user-friendly. And talking to other departments, not only Broken Arrow and Coeida, but across the country that have switched to them, they've been very happy. They have gobbled up former Intermedics, Digitek customers by the handfuls.
The rate's a lot lower, too.
Their rate is lower, yes. They proposed a six percent management fee, which is lower than what we're paying now by a lot. Kim's staff and my staff would have full access to look at their different portals, to look at their financial analysis and data. We did shop around, and I'll show that on our next slide, and this is kind of who we came back to, just based on the demos we did and the customers we talked to. What we are looking at, and I'll explain why, our contract with Intermedics, Digitek, does end at the end of September, but for us, switching in the middle of a calendar year would be a nightmare that we don't want to tackle. Being with two different companies in the middle of a year would be hard. So what we're proposing is staying month-to-month with Digitek through the end of the calendar year, December thirty-first, and looking at trying to make a move to the new provider January one of twenty-two.
I noticed there's a significant software cost, but what does that break down to on our percentage that we're paying with this other group?
So it's two separate vendors at this point. Right now, we're stuck using the proprietary software that Digitek has called TrickTix. With the new vendor, we would basically go to a vendor-neutral reporting software that we could use with just about any billing provider out there. So say in the future, we go with EMS MC, and in three years, we decide we don't like them, we want to go to somebody else. We can keep using the same software we've been using and not have to worry about changing. It's also much more communication-friendly with our state reporting that we have to do. We've had a lot of glitches with the current software, not making the reports to the state health department like it's supposed to, and we're having to go back in and fix it. Our ballpark cost, based on talking to ESO, which would be our software vendor, is about forty-five thousand dollars, based on the number of runs and billing rate.
Where does that three percent put the number that the other companies...
I would have to go, but it's still less.
I bet you it's more than forty-five.
It's still less. So...
You mean it'd be more, the three percent's probably more than the forty-five rate?
The forty-five, Brian, is actually the billing cost. That's not the software. That's the, that is the EMS MC cost. Eleven thousand per year is roughly what the software costs. And one thing that actually came out, literally last week, is our fire reporting record management system that we use was just bought by ESO. Right now, we're doing two separate reports. Every ambulance call, we have to do two different reports, one on the fire side to record the run number and give us an incident number, and then we have to do the patient care report. In the next year or two, as these two companies merge together, we'll have one report, and it will streamline a lot of stuff, make our life a lot easier. But based on our run numbers, we're looking at the eleven thousand dollars a year, roughly. The hardware I spoke of with the laptops, you can do it on any computerized device because the reports are all in the cloud. You can do it on a phone, you can do it on iPad, you can do it on a computer, so it will make us being stuck with using their laptop and their proprietary software, it goes out the window. So if we don't have internet, the guy can get on his phone and finish the report if he has to.
So for the retreat, it might be helpful, they have a spreadsheet, here's our current cost, and told them, and if we go to this other, here's what we project our costs, so it makes it easy for them to compare the two.
Yeah, it sounded like it's a better deal anyway.
For the workshop.
Kim will probably echo, trying to get our actual costs from our current vendor has been nightmarish, because they randomly just changed how, it used to be, they sent us everything they collected, and then we paid them a monthly bill. Now, other than paper checks written to the city that they can't cash, if it's a credit card payment or an automatic draft from an insurance company, Medicare/Medicaid, they just keep it and deduct it. So a lot of times, we have a negative monthly bill because they've already collected a lot of the charges. The only thing they send us to physically deposit are the paper checks made out to the city of Guthrie. So it's going to be hard to go back and truly pull what we've owed them in the last couple of years. And they just, they never told us they were doing this. We found out when we had a budget surplus at the end of the year, why were our payments to this company five percent of what they were budgeted to be? So we had to go back, oh, yeah, we changed that, they never told us, so...
But the best we can get would be good handy.
But we'll work on it and try to get some...
Well, it sounds like a shell game, and on this other deal, it doesn't sound like it's going to be near as difficult to track.
Yeah, and that's, some of the same problems we're experiencing are the same problems these other agencies that have switched providers have had. And we used to do this in-house up until oh-seven, or actually oh-four, oh-five. There are very few cities that, or agencies that still do this in-house. IMSA does their own, but they have an entire department, and that's all they do is billing and coding. It's hard to keep up with the Medicare/Medicaid private insurance updates and everything. So some of the other vendors we reached out to, one of them is here in Oklahoma, Medicam is based out of Tonkwall. They have pretty good reviews, they're not huge, their rate was a little bit lower, but most of the services using them are very small, don't have near the call volume we have. Coeida's one that used them for years, they just switched because they just weren't getting the level of service they thought they should have got, and their revenue has subsequently gone up since switching. They also force you to use Image Trend, which is also, they're a billing provider and a software provider. Medicam makes you use Image Trend, and it's not a very user-friendly software. Another company was Quick Med Claims, six percent, just like what EMS MC's proposed. The two Oklahoma clients they have that we talked to, they were good reviews, but we weren't able to get a whole lot from their sales reps. They just kind of threw out a number, yeah, this is probably what it'd be, just not a lot of good information that we were able to garner from them. And then Image Trend, they have no billing references in Oklahoma whatsoever. They do provide software, including to the state health department, but they proposed a six percent fee, but we weren't able to really talk to any local references that we would trust as far as getting a good or bad review from them. And I say, I mentioned Broken Arrow, and I know they're on the other side of the state, but they are by far the largest fire-based EMS provider in the state. Other than IMSA, they're one of the largest ambulance providers in the state of Oklahoma. And they have a whole EMS division, and they're great to work with as far as, you know, provide data and information. So being able to lean on them for recommendations is pretty huge. And they were one of the first fire departments to take over the ambulance back in the seventies when the law allowed it, and they took it for funeral homes. So they've been doing this just about as long as we have. One other thing I wanted to bring up... One other thing I wanted to bring up is our, our rural and local fire billing rate structure. We don't send a lot of bills out, just because it's, it's not an easy process to do. Kim's office does it, and we have to compile the data and send it. It's just, it doesn't work all that well, and I don't think our collection rate is all that great. We just don't have the knowledge on billing these insurance companies like some of these private billing folks have.
Yeah, that's all we do.
It's, it's a, you got to know how to play their game to be able to get the money from them, and it's an ever-changing industry. Something that has really picked up in Oklahoma in the last several years is fire billing for car wrecks, fires outside of city limits. Cities don't typically bill for fire runs on houses within the city limits, because those folks are local taxpayers. Car wrecks on the interstate, car fires on folks passing through is typically what folks bill on. Most of your insurance policies, especially your homeowner's policy, you're paying for it, and it's up to you getting with that insurance company and getting them to pay the bill, or they're just going to eat that money and keep it. So, there's a lot, larger group of fire departments getting, just like with EMS billing, they get a fire billing contractor. Fire Recovery USA, Lawton, Durant, are two larger ones that we've spoken with. They use Fire Recovery USA. They also do EMS billing, but they didn't have any users in Oklahoma that we could reach out to. But on the fire side, Lawton and Durant went to them a few years ago, and basically, what you do, much like on the EMS side, the vendor has access to your record system, they log in and pull all the billing for you. They pull it all, they send it out, they go after the insurance company, they do all the collection stuff. They keep a, keep a chunk of money for their fee, they send you the rest. So, we collect the data on the scene, pass it along to them, and then they do the billing. I mean, it's, it's more than what we're getting now. Yes, we pay them a fee, just like we would on the EMS side, but we would be.
Getting nothing now.
It's money we're not getting. I mean, we, we get very little on fire billing.
What do they call that, unrealized income?
Pretty much. But one of the things that they recommend in talking to the chief in Lawton was one thing they had to do, was, we haven't updated our rural fire billing rates in several years. We cleaned up a little bit of language a few years ago, but as far as our hourly rates, they haven't changed. They do have proposed numbers, and they recommend a one and a half percent consumer price index fee increase annually. Just, that's what they recommend to their customers, by no means do we have to do that. But if this is something that we decide we want to look at, we could work with the attorney and prepare draft ordinance later to look at adjusting those rates. I'll go back again and say, most of your insurance policies, if you dig down in the fine print and look, you're already paying for this. Whether you use it or not, you're paying for it, and if we don't bill it and collect it, that's just more money the insurance company's getting to keep. So, anything we can do to help recoup some of the costs that we incur on going on these emergencies would be, as Brian said, unrealized income. And that's pretty much it, we're about out of time, so. Answer any questions you guys have, it's a lot of information, but we had an open date to get this in here prior to the retreat.
Questions, by the council? So, are you looking for any motions here?
I don't think so. I think we're just looking to provide information in preparation for.
What we would like is to put, calmly, is for you all to put your big-boy pants on and come to the retreat to make decisions.
Okay. We're going to have lunch, are you going to do that?
We'll feed you lunch if you make enough decisions by lunchtime.
I will say, the EMS stuff, we will need to try to get in place, you know, to have enough lead time to prepare for the switch, so we'll need to get that done either right after the retreat or right there.
We, we didn't feel comfortable asking you to make decisions on the first presentation, so our thought process is, all these things will come to the retreat in a summary format where you can make some collective decisions rather than one at a time on some of these things.
You may have to base your savings on the realized increase in revenue that these other communities are seeing.
Yeah. Between Kim and I, I think we can, as far as a comparison with our current billing provider and proposed, I think we'll be able to come up with something that's at least realistic.
All right. Well.
Appreciate it.
Excellent presentation and good effort with, with ODOT engineer on the safety stuff, keeping them.
We will, I think we're all on a first-name basis with him now, he's definitely attentive to some of the needs.
Good relationship, Bill. Good relationship, Bill.
Hopefully, it'll pay off.
Chief, great job. For is update, Leroy, you got a couple, three minutes, I think?
We don't have anything else to present tonight.